Well, oddly enough, I hear people talking about the Board of Tax and Estimates. A lot of livability and quality of life.
That's a, that's a lie. Soren, you're lying to me. No one has said anything to you about the Board of Estimate and Taxation.
You would think so, but I have had people.
So the Board of Esti- here's a quote from your website, the Board of Tax and Estimate. By the way, you have misstated the name of the, the Board of Estimate and Taxation. It's the Board of Estimate and Taxation. So please edit your website.
Okay, I will do that right now.
We're rolling. We're rolling.
This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing.
I've got plenty of time.
I have nothing else going on today?
We're in the Wedge neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
There's a dog. That's a good dog. What? Sadie? Did you say Sadie?
Yeah, I, I named her after a pirate because she also has one eye. And so the, the list of female pirate names was mostly Chinese that I found. So Sadie was the best option.
Oh, I'm, I can't say hi. I've ever, I don't know of any female pirates. Who, who is Sadie? Who is the pirate Sadie?
Yeah, she's really a doozy. Um, her name, or as she was known to me on this article I read, Sadie the Goat. She was a, basically a mugger in New York in 1700s. And then she got, I don't know if you want to hear the whole story, but she got mugged by another mugger and chased out of New York. And she went up and down the Hudson River raiding farms. And then eventually they chased her back to New York and she owned a bar by the port for the rest of her life.
Okay. And you named your dog after this person?
Well, she has one eye, so I thought she should get a pirate name.
This questionable character. Ward, Ward Eight candidate, Soren Stevenson, has named his dog after a pirate. Uh, this is the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. And today we're talking to Soren Stevenson, who is running for city council in Ward Eight against Council President Andrea Jenkins. Uh, welcome to the show, Soren.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
So I, I've been looking at your website and I, I saw the tagline, kinder, a kinder, safer Minneapolis. I think it's Soren with Ward Eight instead of four. That's a nice touch. And also kinder, safer Minneapolis. So keeping in mind that we can't, I don't know if we can legislate kindness necessarily, but how do we, how do we achieve kinder, a kinder Minneapolis?
Yeah. So I'm looking at it from the systems of the city, the city departments, the policing system, the public work system. We can have kinder systems that treat people with respect and dignity. Whereas I, as I see it now, um, many of our systems are not treating regular residents, black and brown people with kindness.
Do you have anything in particular in mind?
Yeah. I mean, public safety is a really easy one. Um, our police department doesn't treat regular residents with kindness. Um, whether it's through outright violence, um, or whether it's through dismissiveness and, and assuming sometimes disdain for community members. Um, and so we can, we can build systems that treat people with kindness and, and, and that is not something that we have right now.
Is that about culture? Is that like culture change, you think? Or like, uh, how do you build a kind system, for example?
Yeah. I mean, um, culture change is certainly part of it, but a kind system is a system that takes people into account. And the fact that people are messy and variable and inherently not fitting within a box. And so if our systems are built with, well, if you just X, Y, and Z, things wouldn't go wrong. But people don't just do that. People are, are random and messy. And so we have to have systems that take into account that people are extremely variable and different. And they act different and it doesn't mean that they're bad or, or unworthy people. It just means that they're people.
So you're running for office i- in a unique position as someone, the physical embodiment of basically the result of our city's abusive, poorly trained, whatever adjective you want to use, police department. You lost your left eye after MPD shot you in the face with a less lethal round during the George Floyd protests in 2020. So, and you, you say on your website, the current city council has not made the transformational change that we need to prevent this kind of brutality from happening again. What would you have the city council do differently? What should they have done to fix a broken police department?
Yeah. So it's, it goes beyond just the police department. Um, so I think that Minneapolis, the people in Minneapolis have a vision of a, of a city that, that is better, a city that takes into account what, what happened in 2020. And we're, we're becoming something new. We can't act like 2019 is, is a world that still exists. It just isn't. And so things that the city council hasn't done, it hasn't, you know, produced effective, um, citizen oversight of the police. It hasn't housed everybody. It hasn't stopped sweeping homeless and houseless people from place to place and just throwing their stuff away and creating these horrible situations where you see people being pushed down and pushed around by bulldozers. Um, rents continue to rise. Home prices continue to rise, even as, uh, interest rates rise. Um, property taxes continue to rise. It's just, we're not creating a city that, that families want to move into, want to send their kids to our schools, want to be a part of our neighborhoods. In fact, we're seeing the opposite of people leaving. And I, I don't think that's, that is inherently what Minneapolis and what my community has to be. I think we can be and we should be a place that people are flocking to and want to move to and want to be a part of our communities and our schools. And the current city council isn't making that happen.
I didn't suffer any trauma or personal loss necessarily, uh, over the last few years, uh, just from being a resident of the city. But I, I feel like, I feel very scarred. I think a lot of people feel that way. You know, I get angry. I get despairing. And I was thinking as I was preparing for this and reading about you that those, those emotions must be so much more intense for you. And I read an interview you did in 2021. You mentioned the effect that it had on your mood and relationships. So I wonder if you're in a better place now and if you have advice for how to channel what we've all gone through into a more mentally healthy direction?
Yeah. So for me, I've been talking a lot recently about how after my injury, I've had to go through this process of making meaning out of what happened. What does it mean to be someone that was shot in, in, in the uprising in 2020 in Minneapolis? What does it mean to be a white man who was hurt in the struggle for black liberation? Um, what do these things mean? And so through, really through a community process with people in, in the anti-police violence movement, family supporting families against police violence, um, I've had to make a lot of meaning about what this means for me and what this means for how I should exist in the world and how I should move forward in life. And to me, it's been a call to action. I can either know what I know and have seen what I've seen and do nothing about it or try and hide from it. Or I can take what's happened to me and I can take what I know and I can do something about it. I have chosen that path because I am frankly, one of the lucky ones. I survived my interaction with MPD where as not everyone does survive their interaction with MPD. And so given that, I feel a certain responsibility that I don't think I alone hold, but I feel a certain responsibility to go out and create a better world, a world where people are not killed, beaten and, and generally brutalized by our city. And so if I was giving advice to anyone, I would say the only way to feel better in desperate times is to be connected to a group that's doing something important. That's the only way I've found to survive, let alone thrive.
So, uh, another thing I read is that you had just received your master's in international development before you were shot, uh, in the face and lost your eye. So I'm sure that changed your trajectory. So can you talk about in what way, like where you thought you would be now and where you actually are now? How, how did that change?
Yeah. So my degree is called Development Practice, but actually by the end of it, I was, I was doing research and studying housing policy instead. I didn't change the name of the degree because, you know, it was too far in. So even before the injury, um, I was more focusing in on dealing with housing issues here in the U.S. as opposed to going abroad. Um, and that's for a variety of reasons. The main one being, why would I go, you know, halfway across the world to tell other people how to live their lives when there's people sleeping on the streets here in Minneapolis? And so, um, that's where I'm focused and focused on, on my community and my city. And so that, that came prior to the injury, but then the injury just accelerated everything from there.
So would you say like, uh, so I guess housing would be something you care a ton about?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I, I worked at a nonprofit making housing co-ops prior to this and, yeah, I did that research and studied housing policy at the U. So that's, that takes up a lot of my brain space.
Have you done any, I don't know, volunteer work or like activism around housing here locally?
I don't think it would necessarily be housing specific, but, um, you know, I've done some volunteer work with our streets, which transportation and housing are intimately connected. Um, so, so yes, in, in that, I think most of my activism and volunteer work has been through police violence. Whereas my professional life has more been through housing.
What's, what's going on in the housing sphere that has caught your eye over the last few years? What do you, what do you think is really important? What have you been very interested in and curious about outcomes or hoping to change outcomes on housing wise in the city or, or maybe at the state level?
Yeah. So I think the city level is where most of the most important work can happen in housing, you know, be that, development patterns and the way that the city is built up, um, what can be built where is really important. But in terms of policies that I think are super important is tenant opportunity to purchase is, is huge in terms of getting community wealth and the control of housing in the hands of people that live here as opposed to amorphous corporations that are anywhere except in the buildings themselves. Yeah. And rents continue to rise. And so I'm, I'm in favor of strong rent control. And then we have, we have encampments that are getting swept left and right. And I, I find that frankly immoral. Not that every encampment can exist in its exact location, but the fact that we do not have a cohesive response to people sleeping on the street. Instead, what we have is pushing people here and there and throwing their stuff away each time we do it.
You know, you've got people who live near encampments who are like, who are suffering, their quality of life is suffering because of the, the, the effects of living near an encampment. And you've got like an inhumane, uh, encampment sweeping policy, or I don't even know if there is a policy at the city related to encampments, but, but, uh, like, how do you navigate those two, uh, things? Cause as a council member, you, you might have a lot of constituents, if you have an encampment in your ward saying, something needs to be done about this. Uh, like, how do you navigate that?
Yeah. So I think the first thing is that we can't just let encampments happen organically and not have any sort of interaction with them. Um, we need to be very involved as a city in what's happening. And so to me, that looks like the very first step is we, we come in and we talk to the people, A, as people and B, figure out what, what is it that has gotten them to the point where they're sleeping in a tent or, or not in a tent on the sidewalk, um, and connect them with the resources they need in order to get into a home. You know, be that, you know, treatment resources for, for mental health or drugs, or maybe they just can't afford a place to live. And so connecting them with, with different things in order to, to remedy that situation, be it workforce or, or temporary aid or something like that. I hadn't exactly, you know, haven't exactly nailed it down. But the first thing we need to do is we need to approach people that live in encampments and find out what it is that they need in order to no longer be in an encampment. And so, so long as the city is really active in reaching out to folks and getting them the things that they need in order to not be on the streets, we'll make a lot of headway against having encampments at all. And then, um, as we get into trickier and trickier situations, then we can find other measures that are more palatable for the individuals sleeping on the street as well as people who live or work near, where people have decided to congregate.
City council tried to enact, uh, or so- some members of the council tried to enact a pause on encampments. And maybe we can look into this issue, see how we can do it better, have an actual city policy on it. And that didn't pass. I forget if it just didn't have the votes or if the city attorneys were like, no, you actually don't have the power to tell the mayor how to do this. But, uh, assuming this, this is a mayor thing and you have a limited ability to influence this as a council member. What do we, I'm asking you an impossible question. What do you do? What do you do in that situation where people are complaining to you, the council member on both sides and, uh, you, I don't, do you say that this is the mayor's job? Or what, what do you do?
Yeah. I mean, so long as the mayor doesn't want to act in a humane and responsible way, that'll be on him. But I think that the council can and should pass policies that we think will effectively deal with encampments and house people in a humane and effective way. And if the city attorney or the mayor wants to shoot it down, then that can be on them. And if the courts end up shooting it down, then that can be on them. But I think that the city council can't just sit idly by and say, oh, we're not sure if it's our responsibility or not. If the city council thinks that they can act on something, I think they should be very active in passing policies that will improve the city and then leave it up to the mayor on whether he wants to veto it or whether the courts want to shoot it down.
Yeah, I, I agree with that so much because we have all these fights about, with this new government structure, like who has the power and the city attorney weighs in, like put the onus on them, like pass something. There's so much that if the city council was united, uh, they could either, they could stand up for themselves. I think the problem is there's not a council majority eager to defend their, their side of the government, the legislative branch. Uh, they could fund more staff. They could do more policymaking. Uh, which brings me to, uh, something from your website where you say, current leadership went too far in giving away the council's power. The council must be able to craft its own policies free of the mayor's office. Approve or deny political appointments and audit, investigate city departments. How do you see the council, uh, having given away too much of their power? Can you talk about that a little?
Yeah. So it's, it's a moving target because the way that I understand it, that the council has been, um, well, the, the city government has been addressing issues is as they come up, they get addressed. As new issues come up, they get addressed. Um, and it, and so far it's, it's just seemed that, the current leadership has been too deferential towards, oh, well, we'll just let the mayor or, or the executive branch hold this. Or, oh, we'll just let the mayor or the executive branch have control over this. And so it's, it's gotten to the point where the city council has less and less authority, even over its own workings. And so I think a really basic one that I, I'd like to see is I'd like to see council members have complete, or the council have complete autonomy over crafting policy, um, which is not currently the case. And, and the way I'm seeing this reflected is at the state level, the legislature has a reviser's office and legislators go to the reviser or send a letter to the reviser and say, I want this policy. I want it to look this way. Please draft this for me. And the reviser's job is to draft it up in a way that's in accordance with Minnesota law. Or is in a cohesive form with Minnesota law. And the council doesn't currently have that. They don't have something where they can just say, I want this policy written this way. Please draft it. There's a lot of more rigmarole having to go through city staff and be that going through departments and the city attorney's office. And so our council members right now don't actually have as much autonomy over just write me a policy so that the city council can vote on it. And that's really hindering our city's ability to do things. And that, I think a lot of that has come down to the way that they've implemented the Strong Mayor system. And, and I, I want to see that be different.
I see a little bit of council apathy also and like disinterest in protecting their own, their own prerogative. Probably because they see themselves as allied with the mayor. I think, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna opine here. I'm not a candidate, but I'm gonna give my opinion. I think the city attorney's office, it's the mayor's city attorney. It's, and this is not a comment on our current city attorney. It's just like, the, the way things go is the city attorney serves the mayor and it doesn't serve, the office doesn't serve the, the city council. So they could use their own legal staff. That would be a good thing. I was talking to somebody who worked for the city council in New York City. And he was like, well, we had, uh, we had nine, I don't know if this is the correct number, but it was something like nine staff for, for councilman. Committees had staff and they had their own legal staff. And so they could do all this without worrying about the mayor interfering. Another thing I've noticed is a bunch of policies just get delivered from the executive branch, like how we implemented Strong Mayor. It's like, this is what the mayor wants. Okay, city council, now change it if you want, if you can manage to get the votes. And like, that's not how it should go. Uh, that, I know that's how the budget works, where the mayor comes up with his budget and the council amends, but like, something like legislating government structure, we should have gotten something from, from the city council. They should have had their own ideas on this. But rant over with some of my thoughts.
No, I, I agree with a lot of that. Um, if we don't have an effective legislative branch, all we have is a mayor that both legislates and is the executive. And that's not democracy. That's not how our system of government works. And so I think like a really good, uh, a really good thing for us to be basing our council off of is the state legislature. And the state legislature, they have staff that do a variety of things. Committees have staff. And they come up with all their own policies and all their own things. And the governor can put in a budget and the, the legislature is free to take and leave as much of that as they want. And then they pass their own policies and the governor gets to veto or not veto. And so I see that the council and the mayor should be really similar. The mayor has full executive authority, but then the council has full legislative authority. The mayor can send us a budget. We say thank you. And then we write up a budget as we see fit and we send it to the mayor for him to veto or not veto. Um, and the same goes with policy. We need to be able to craft our own policies. Keep saying we, I'm not on the council. If I was elected, what I would want would be a, a council that could craft its own policies, craft its own budget or heavily amend the, the mayor's budget and then pass it and send it off to him. And he can either veto or not veto it and let him be the executive, let the mayor's office be the executive and let the council be the legislative.
I, I, here's a joke and I'm sorry to announce my jokes ahead of time. It makes them less funny. But, uh, it seems like the Charter Commission dropped a new government structure on us with no plan. There was no plan, Soren. There was no plan. Have you heard that one before?
I've heard that one before.
Okay. In a couple of months, we may get presentations on how, how they plan to staff up an actual real legislative branch. We're, we're gonna get presentations coming up in May. So I'm looking forward to that. So you're running in Ward Eight. Andrea Jenkins is the council president, the incumbent. You're running against Andrea Jenkins. So a lot of this, like, I don't know, she represents the council majority. I imagine you would say a lot of this is on her. And so I wonder, here, here's my question. What, how are you different from Andrea Jenkins? What has she gotten wrong that people should choose you instead?
Yeah. Well, I really see it as I have a vision that I think that I share with a majority of Ward Eight. Um, I have a vision of a kinder and safer Minneapolis where we have a public safety system that treats people with dignity and respect, that is effective at dealing with crime and preventing crime in the first place. A housing system where people are housed, where rents do not continue to skyrocket. Home prices don't continue to skyrocket and people can afford to live in Minneapolis. And a, a council that deals with the climate crisis and with environmental justice, environmental racism, which is just not what we're seeing right now. So I want to be a part of a council that is really active in taking on the issues that we're dealing with. And I'm just not seeing that from the current leadership.
What is the big concern in Ward Eight when you have conversations with people? I imagine public safety is in there, but, uh, is there like a top three that you hear from people?
Yeah. Um, I think, you know, I've named four. So be that public safety, police accountability, which I think are separate things, um, obviously related, but separate. Housing and then climate change slash environmental justice. Um, I think those are the four big ones, but I do hear a lot of people talking about the, the council having given up too much power. Now I hear people talking about, well, oddly enough, I hear people talking about, uh, the Board of Tax and Estimates. Um, a lot of livability and quality of life.
That's a, that's a lie. Soren, you're lying to me. No one has said anything to you about the Board of Estimate and Taxation.
You would think so, but I have had people. Um, but a lot of things come down to livability and people are just concerned that this ward and South Minneapolis is, is not as livable as it should be. And so whether that be roads like 36 that have gigantic potholes in them that you have to, you know, weave in and out of, or being able, being unable to bike on 38th. And, you know, snow being so high and ice being so thick on the sidewalks that you can't leave the house if you are even somewhat unsteady on your feet. Um, I'm hearing a lot of those things. And a lot of people concerned about school enrollment going down and families moving out. So that's my main focus is that Minneapolis, Ward Eight, needs to be an incredibly livable place. The sidewalks need to be clear all year round. The roads need to be passable. You need to be able to bike safely on, on all of the roads. Um, and so that's, that's not currently happening. Um, and, and I want to, I want to see that happen. And, and so public safety fits right in with that. Housing affordability fits right in with that. Pollution and climate change fit right in with that.
So you mentioned climate. What do you think are the city's biggest two or three climate opportunities uh, to achieve the city's climate goals?
Putting aside, um, environmental justice and environmental racism, which we should come back, come back to for sure. We need to deal honestly with our relationship with, with driving. And so we should, uh, we can't continue to burn gasoline at the pace that we burn it. And so we need to have real clean and safe opportunities for transit. And those need to be things that we can rely on and things that we want to rely on. Um, and same goes for, when I'm talking about livability of sidewalks, we need to have sidewalks that people can walk on to go to the grocery store, to go to restaurants and, and return without having to penguin the whole way or veer into the street or hop into the, the bike lane or, or whatever it is. That is a huge part of our climate obligation is to get it so that 12 months out of the year, you can walk confidently or as confidently as you can do anything in the winter, um, on our sidewalks. So yeah, I think transportation is huge and that goes right into the way that we do housing and the way that we do development. And so we need to have places where people can live full and happy and healthy lives within their own neighborhoods and communities. Um, and that goes directly towards, uh, carbon emissions, be it the way we get around or the types of, of housing and buildings that we have that consume or don't consume more or less energy. Um, so that's huge. And that's where the city has the most responsibility is, is what the city looks like itself and the conditions of, of housing and of transportation surfaces. That's a fancy word for roads and sidewalks. Um, yeah, so that's huge. And then I, I know that there's good proposals coming out for how we can get homes off of, off of natural gas, off of oil, off of other fossil fuels. And those will be really important ways as well.
We talked about the Board of Estimate and Taxation, how you lied to me about people bringing that up as a, as a priority that is not, not believable. But it is on your website. So you have a weird obsession. So you have a weird obsession with the board of estimate taxation.
I wouldn't have it on there if people hadn't have brought it up, but they did and they made good points. So here we are.
You do have an alibi for this. It's on your website. So the board of, here's a quote from your website, the board of tax and estimate. By the way, you have misstated the name of the, the board of estimate taxation. It's the board of estimate taxation. So please edit your website.
Okay, I will do that right now.
Needs to have a full-time financial analyst that is hired and managed by that board, independent of the council and the mayor's office. Hoot, this must come from one individual in particular. Who told you this?
You just won't talk about my neighbors on the things that they care about.
Was it somebody in Ward eight told you this?
Yes, multiple people in Ward eight told me about this.
Why, how is this?
Well.
Like I've heard this before. I just don't understand why someone would bring it up to a city council candidate. This is, I remember when the mayor said like sidewalks aren't in his top 10 priorities. Well, the board of estimate is in taxation. It's not even in my top 100 priorities.
Well, I mean, it, it, it does actually really coincide with what we've talked about earlier with the council's power. And so I am concerned that the mayor's office is taking too much power. And so be that financial analysis, this board, and you're gonna correct me on the name of it, but this board needs to have its own financial advise, um, advisor is the wrong word, but it needs to be able to do its own financial analysis so that we can have an independent financial analysis, just like we need an independent council that can make its own legislation.
Okay, it makes sense. I'm sorry to make fun of you so much for this because it really does make all the sense in the world. I, I'm in favor of more staff for more things that are not, uh, involved with the mayor, mayor's executive branch. That's a good idea. So you mentioned you did some work with our streets. How long does that go back? How long have you, cause you speak, uh, fairly fluently about like complete neighborhoods. I recognize that. So how far back does your interest in, in, uh, you know, transportation and housing go?
Um, if you're asking how long ago did I get involved with our streets, it's not that long ago. But if you're asking, when did I become interested in being able to bike to school and work?
Yeah, the second one.
Yeah, I, I used to bike to elementary school. And my dad would bike to work, not, not year round, but.
Here in Minneapolis?
Uh, I actually, at that time I was living in Southern Oregon, so, yeah, we were evading the rain rather than ice. So yeah, I, I used to bike to school. I, my, what would happen is my dad would leave for work and we would, we lived, um, kind of up on the side of a hill mountain thing. It would be, it would be a mountain in Minnesota. We lived on the side of a mountain. And so, uh, we would ride our bikes together. His work was, was farther than my school. So we would ride our bikes down. He would drop me off at school and then he would continue on to work. And I loved that. And then obviously we would have to go back up the mountain. But I loved it and it was a great way to get to school. It, it was a great way for him to get to work. It's a great way for, he did it A, because he liked, he likes biking, but B, because he was a grown man who needed exercise. And so it was a great way to spend a little time with me while also getting some exercise. And as a kid, it was a great way to get to school. And then you could, you know, when you're on the playground, you can look guys, here's my bike. Um, I don't know. It was a great way to live and I, I wanna continue to live, live, I want to continue to live that way. I, I do, you know, bike around. I'm not the most avid biker, but I do it cause it's a great way to get around. Um, and it makes me happy and I think it makes a lot of people happy.
So, uh, as we continue through Soren's bio of transportation, uh, at what age did you connect transportation? At what age did you realize we had really screwed up our transportation system? And that we have precluded people from getting around in any way, but in a car in the vast, vast majority of places. What age did you become political about transportation?
I think the age where I realized there was a problem and the age where I, um, became political about it are two very different ages. I lived overseas as a kid and, and was lucky enough to do a lot of travel as a kid. And so I would do things like take a subway or take public transportation to get around. And then move back to the U S and that was not an option where I was living. So that was probably the first time I recognized there was a problem. But when I became political about it of, oh, wow, a strong transportation system really makes a livable and a happy city. Um, that was probably just in the last couple of years that I, you know, put the two together, though I did know like, oh, yeah. Good transit is, is good and it feels good and it makes me happy.
Let's talk about commercial zoning. Uh, it's a tie-in with transportation. You've already talked about complete neighborhoods. So I probably have a good idea where you're coming, you would come from on this, this topic. But do we have enough, uh, places where you can open up shops, restaurants, uh, grocery stores? Cause as it is, they are restricted to very few parts of the city. The city is doing a land use rezoning study now. So audience, please comment, please comment. Uh, minneapolis2040.com. So do you, you have any thoughts about that?
I think in your, your episode that you did on this, you said it was four and a half percent of the city you can build. Or you can have any sort of.
I think my guests, my guest said it was, we're starting from three percent of the city is owned commercial and they're taking it to four and a half percent, which means you can say it's a 50% increase, but still it's a very small amount.
Yeah. I mean, that's an incredibly small amount of places where people can, can live lives. I don't have a target percentage off of the top of my head, but there's something knocking at my door.
Go ahead. We can cut that out if you wanna get it.
Okay. Well, now you get the whole backstory for this. I don't know if you wanted to include this or not, but.
Do we get the backstory for the man who has entered your dwelling to do some work?
Yes. Um, so on my, on my website, one of the things I say is I am a renter. So this is maintenance. And what has happened is that, uh, there were mice, uh, in my place. And they left traps or poison traps and then the mice died in the oven. Like, like into a part where I could not reach. And so currently because of injury, I lost most of my sense of smell, but I can kind of tell that, that the air is off. And my girlfriend refuses to come over. Um, it is, uh, it is not pleasant in here. So I have the windows open and I have the heat turned up to keep me. I, it's a, it's a boiler, so I.
So, so in other words, the individual over your left shoulder is removing dead mice from behind or maybe inside your oven?
Yeah, um, behind, inside, underneath. Um, I can't actually see them on the screen. But yeah, that's, that's what's happening there.
It's very exciting. This is a podcast first.
Well, you know, ideally this wouldn't have happened at this exact moment, but again, ideally there wouldn't be dead mice in my house.
Yeah. Did, did we finish the commercial zoning conversation? Were we ready to go on to the next thing?
Uh, I don't think we finished, but I, there needs to be more spaces for people to live lives. Uh, I think we see, I think in, in the last episode you had mentioned, um, the issue with the Aldi in North Minneapolis and that being partially a, a commercial zoning issue. But yeah, I mean, if there's, if there's places where there's a lot of people and no ability to have a grocery store or no ability to have vital resources, a very low-key cafe, you know, things that people want, things that people need, then you can't have, um, you can't have a great city, you know? That's what great cities look like. People go on vacation to cities so that they can do these sorts of things. Um, so yeah, I want, I want that for Minneapolis too.
What I learned on that episode from my guests, and people can go back and listen to that episode, is that you can build like a four to six-story apartment building. But you would, there are places in the city where you can do that, but you would not be allowed to put some commercial space on the first floor, even if you, even if you wanted to. So that surprised me a little. I should have known that.
Yeah. And, uh, also on that same episode, you were talking about how in some places you have to include both this and that. And sometimes, sometimes that's not feasible either. So I think, uh, I think the city could do a lot less in terms of dictating where you can have saunas, for example, to do another, uh, deep cut to, uh, to Minneapolis issues. And it could do a little more in terms of letting people build the kind of neighborhoods that they wanna live in.
You mentioned environmental justice a little earlier and, and said you wanted to come back to that. So I assume you're referring to the Roof Depot site where, uh, in the Phillips neighborhood and residents don't want a public works facility. They want an urban farm. It's a very polluted site. They're, they were opposing the demolition, uh, which, uh, has already been contracted and the city council did not, uh, did not go back and cancel that contract. It's going forward. So what is your position there?
Yeah, I, my position is that this is a, a crisis of the city's own making. The neighbors in East Phillips, Epi, Little Earth have been advocating for themselves and planning for an urban farm, housing and other services that will create a thriving East Phillips in the way that they want it and the way that they know how. And the city should have stepped in and said, this is a great idea. We can get, we can get a way to build wealth, to house people, to clean up an area that has been struggling and that the city has polluted for the last hundred years. But instead the city decided, why don't we put more industrial traffic there? Why don't we not listen to what's happening, not listen to what neighbors are saying? The engagement process was atrocious. Um, they didn't even send letters to Little Earth despite the fact that it was two blocks away. They didn't send letters in Spanish, Somali or Mongh. It was all in English. So this is a problem that the city created and there was ample opportunity for them not to do this. And there was ample opportunity for them to instead invest in something that would really create a thriving East Phillips and therefore a thriving South Minneapolis. Uh, but the city didn't, the city hasn't gone for it and I, I think it's a total mistake. And if we, if we were better at listening to communities who have been impacted by environmental racism by hundreds of years or a hundred years of pollution, we would be able to, to grow and build a safer and a kinder city. That, that gets back to the kindness is that part of being kind is not poisoning one's children. Or running them over with trucks. And so if we have a system that doesn't locate industrial traffic in places that are, have had too much industrial traffic, too much, too much pollution already. Part of a kinder system is one that takes that into account and puts very necessary things like a waterworks site somewhere where it's not gonna actively harm an already harmed community.
So I remember, uh, Andrea Jenkins at a recent, that meeting where they, they, uh, did not vote to cancel the, the demolition contract. And someone said, uh, people are gonna die. And she was like, no one's gonna die, sir. And I saw an, an interview that Andrew Johnson did and he said that, uh, something to the effect that like, I've, I've looked at it and I don't think the, this is not gonna result in more pollution, essentially. Like it's a polluted site. The demolition can happen and people won't be polluted. Uh, another thing is this, we're pretty far along in this project and uh, city has invested a lot of money. And so I wonder like, if we were gonna invest millions of dollars potentially into environmental justice in East Phillips, would it be this project, this urban farm in this location? I don't know. That's a very long and rambly question. But I guess, I guess I'm just, like, how serious is the result? If this goes forward, why would it cause the pollution that people say it would? Why are Andrea Jenkins and Andrew Johnson wrong on that? I guess that's my question.
Well, to my knowledge, there has not been adequate and independent enough analysis about what the soil underneath the roof looks like. But beyond the arsenic in the soil, you can't say that locating hundreds of trucks in a place is not adding pollution. Trucks are gonna be the last thing that get converted to battery power, to electricity. And the brakes and other parts, you know, tires, these are things that also create particulate matter. And we have to think about trucks and cars as being things that also pollute. I mean, that's why Los Angeles had that smog is from the cars. And so we can't locate hundreds of trucks in an area and say, oh, there's, it's not pollution. It's not pollution in the same way that some of the factories in the area are, you know, have these giant smoke stacks. But it is pollution in that there's a hundred small smoke stacks in the area. And then, but on top of that, there's still also truck traffic. And so this is the area with some of the lowest car ownership rates in the city. And so if you're gonna have people walking and biking and transiting in the area, but you're also gonna have large industrial vehicles, that is going to result in deaths. It just is. So, you know, I, I, I am very sensitive to the fact that the city has already put a lot of money into this. But that is the city's fault. They should not have gotten this far when it's already known. All, all those, all those conditions I told you about, the historic pollution, the levels of car ownership, these things, those have all been known previously. And so the city shouldn't have gotten this far and wasted its money on this.
Soren, we're forty-eight minutes in. I wonder if I have forgotten entirely to cover something that you think is important, uh, to talk about.
We've mostly covered it. I think my, my top four issues being public safety, a public safety system where when you call nine one one, um, the right person shows up and so, and they show up quickly. You know, so if someone's yelling in the middle of the night, you know, three AM on the street, you can call and not be worried that the person who's going to come is going to put you or them in harms way. But rather that the person who comes is gonna be someone who knows how to deal with a mental health crisis or substance abuse issues or houseless issues. That's part of this kinder, kinder system is a system where people say, I can get this person help by calling rather than I shouldn't call cause I'm concerned for their safety, but I also feel unsafe. And so now I'm just uncomfortable and they're uncomfortable. Part of livability, part of a kinder ci- city is one where we can expect that the city is gonna come in and be a partner with, with us, with people who are in need. So I, I don't think, yeah, to get back to, I don't think we had really covered that all the way. Um, but that's, that's how I see a kind public safety system. I know a lot of people and I keep hearing more and more people saying, I don't call the police. I don't call nine one one. And so I see scary things happen and I either leave it to somebody else or I just feel bad. And that's, that's no way to have a city. We need a city where when you see an unsafe thing happen, you can call nine one one and be sure that the person who shows up is going to treat you with respect. The person who needs help with respect is not going to have a pattern and practice of racial discrimination and racial violence. And something where we really have trust in each other and trust in the, in the city.
So final thing that was not the end, Soren, recommendations. Are you familiar with this, uh, particular segment?
Um, of course I listened and failed to come up with any recommendations. What are the recommendations again?
Okay. So something you enjoy, and I'm not limiting it to books because I think there are a bunch of terrible people who ask for book recommendations. And not everyone necessarily reads books all the time. There are other things in life besides books, says the man who doesn't read books. But, uh, what, what do you enjoy? Uh, you have any hobbies? Something you think other people should do that you enjoy. It could be a walk in a park, a book, a video game, a movie, whatever. What, what should people be doing that will make them happy?
Yeah, um, I get a lot of joy out of walking in my neighborhood, um, which I'll give you two things. So don't let this be the only one. Walking in my neighborhood and interacting, you know, my favorite restaurants, other restaurants that are close to me. And, cause there's just something fun about like, oh, what am I gonna do, you know, for dinner? And so you walk and you go get dinner and then you walk home and you just, you know, it makes you feel more a part of the community. You get to walk, which feels good. Um, and I understand that not every neighborhood you can do that in. Um, and so that would be another thing on council that I would, you know, wanna be changing. Um, so yeah, that gives me a lot of joy just being in my neighborhood and, and moving within the neighborhood. But in terms of when I really wanna like de-stress and have a little fun, I, I, I do Star Wars things. I love Star Wars. Um, so.
What kind of Star Wars things?
Movies. Well, The Mandalorian just started their new season and it's not my most favorite show that Star Wars has ever put out, but. Movies. Well, The Mandalorian just started their new season and it's not my most favorite show that Star Wars has ever put out, but it's a good time.
Okay. What is your favorite Star Wars show?
Well, I think most people are familiar with the movies, so maybe we should go with the movie.
No, you have to give me what yours is. This is not about, this is not a popularity contest. We're deciding what Soren likes, not what everyone else is going to like.
Okay, well, I really enjoyed the recent Obi-Wan series. It was six episodes of absolute magic.
Is that something to be ashamed of? You seemed reluctant to reveal that. Is that like a, a point of shame in the Star Wars community? Why were you so reluctant to tell us that?
No, I just don't think many people are going to connect with that. So I don't, I don't know. This is, this is a public facing podcast. I love the Obi-Wan series. I don't care who knows, but I think a lot of people are going to be like, there's an Obi-Wan series.
I, I think that's a fine recommendation. So what restaurants do you go to in Ward Eight? You mentioned walking to restaurants. Where, where should we be going?
Well, there is a place near me called Ichigo Crepes. I don't think that's the full title, but anyways, oh, Ichigo Tokyo Crepes is very good. You can get like, I'm not a crepe connoisseur, so maybe this is, maybe this is how they all are, but like, you can essentially get like a, a sweet or savory wrap, but instead of a tortilla, it's a crepe. And then you can get all sorts of drinks and whatnot there, but I go for the wraps. It is excellent and you should try it.
I know I promised that this will be over very soon, but what's going on with that alley that's flooded in the Lyndale neighborhood? Are you familiar with this particular alley?
I have seen, like just walking around, I have seen flooded alleys, but I, I, I'm unaware that there is one particular alley.
You're in the Lyndale neighborhood, right? Did I imagine that?
No, no, that's, yeah, I am, yeah.
Okay, it's like Thirty Second and one of those streets just off Lyndale Avenue. It was on the news. People are like shoveling water out of the ruts on this alley.
WCCO's Mariel Mo spoke to the neighbors who are banding together to drain the lake.
For the last five weeks, this alley has been melting as the lake takes shape.
We have probably four to six inches in each of these trenches.
On a rare sunny Saturday, neighbors who live along this block of Garfield and Thirty-third came together to drain what they could.
We had multiple types of shovels and canoe paddle and pickaxes and we were just being neighborly.
Yeah, I, I think there's more than one that is kind of suffering right now from, from a lot of water. I'm unaware about which one people are shoveling out, but there are at least a couple where you have to walk either into the street to get around it or go up the alley and get around it that way. So there's more than, there's more than one that is currently flooded.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry to end the show awkwardly on this flooded alley note because I don't know what we have to say about it and we should probably stop now, but check out the WCCO story about the flooded alley in the Lyndale neighborhood. Thank you, Soren. I enjoyed meeting you and I enjoyed this conversation.
Yeah, thank you.
This has been the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. Thank you for listening.